It's a community that is generally thought of as home to some of the happiest people in our country by any number of measures. They prohibited drive-throughs in 1982. And I spent a lot of time there growing up, and I never even thought, oh, there's no drive-throughs. It was just the way it was. You had to get out of your car and go in. And then in 2008, the lead-up to this was actually some candidates for city council decided there was a contingency in town who wanted to maybe revisit this decision. And so there were some council members who were actually elected with this reopening of this topic. And it moved through the process of the city government, and on a three-to-two vote, the ban was continued. So I think that that, to me, that says, at least in that community, which is not our community, but I think there's some similarities, we're all very happy, that this is a valid way to have a city and to have a city that we want. And so I'm in favor of this. So I would entertain a motion.
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No opposed. Motion carries. And Mr. and Mrs. Fisher, we hear you. Let's see, next we have item number four is a public reading, or excuse me, a public hearing for a first reading introduction ordinance on extension of formula business ordinance. And this item has been removed from this adjourned agenda and will be rescheduled sometime in the future.
No, sir. This will not be coming back.
It will not be coming back. It is removed from our agenda. Item number five, let's see if I can get this one right, is a public hearing to consider the request from the owner of the varlo for variance from the provisions of the municipal code chapter, the flood damage prevention regulation. And this item has been continued to a future city council meeting date and will not be heard on this meeting. They are still working through some technicalities on that. Item number six, we're into discussion and action items. Discussion and action on a letter of comment for referral for county application use permit And this concerns 1080 and 1088, Herblut Avenue, Sebastopol, which is in the county, not within the city limit. It's an application for a new school site for the Sebastopol Independent Charter School. Staff report, please.
Yes, the city received a referral from the candidates in the regard to charter schools' application to construct a new school just outside of the city limits on a 20-acre property next to the West County Trail near Highway 116. So with these kind of referrals, the city has the opportunity to make comments to the county in their review of the application. So that is why it's on your agenda tonight. It's a significant project. The staff report identifies a number of issues. The school is not requesting any city services, any city utilities. So they're asking for, yeah, city services or a city permit. The staff report identifies a number of issues. One of them is possible comment about the existing charter school building in downtown Sebastopol and the school's intent or intentions about utilization of that property, which is in a prominent location. Possible comments about infrastructure issues, water and wastewater, stormwater, the minimal use of water resources, appropriate stormwater design to be implemented. Access issues, the primary access would be across the bike path, and so there may be concerns about that. There's also emergency access from Herblut Avenue. In combination with the access across the bike trail, that may be an item of concern that the county should pay particular attention to. And then a variety of issues about traffic circulation, pedestrian and bicycle impacts that may be generated by the school. Several hundred students that could attend may walk to the school or bike to the school, or worse, that may be driven to the school. And so the staff report lists some possible areas of impact, not to say that the school is the only thing happening. We have an existing city and existing county surrounding us with many residents that generate impacts, but placing a school in this location may generate additional needs, especially in the area. And then lastly, another category of potential comment is about the land use and a school being developed in the incorporated area and whether the city has comments about that. So we recommend that you hear from members of the public, including representatives of the charter school that appear tonight, and provide direction to staff for any comments that you wish to make.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff?
Any other questions?
The document in the staff report was a supplemental application information, and it's just a term I'm not familiar with. It says, number of vehicles per day passenger, 180, and then it's got 360 ADT at AMP. I'm not familiar with ADT.
I think that's average daily trips.
Okay.
I believe that. I'm not a trucker.
Okay, so basically each car makes a round trip, sounds like, 180 cars to make a round trip. Okay, good. And then, are you familiar or aware, if there's any kind of provision in state law that if a neighborhood or facility or something that's right on the border of a city raises any kind of emergency with water supply, that the city is then required by the state to supply, the city would be required by the state to supply water?
Well, we do have, that's not an unusual situation, of people with either failing septic or water problems in incorporated areas, asking the city for such services. Sue Kelly is really, they're experts on those situations.
I know that for, it is one of the circumstances under which our urban growth boundary would allow us to extend services would be in case of public safety, you know, public health and safety concerns such as failing septic system or well. I don't know if we're up, we would be obliged to provide that service specifically. Would you look into that?
Okay. It could be, you know, a financial issue for an owner as to, well, maybe it would be less expensive to come up to the city, but they may have other options to deal with their situation. And so, yeah, the city may not be fully obligated to provide that service, but, yeah, there are policy statements about health and safety concerns and that is certainly grounds where the city can extend a service.
So it's conceivable, although not likely, based on what's been presented, that the city could find itself in the position of being requested to provide city services?
It's conceivable, you know, well, the drought, there could be contamination. Yeah, so it's certainly impossible.
And I guess my final question before we take public comment would be to the Public Works Director. And, you know, it seems like we're always fighting these giant battles with arsenic in Sebastopol. I know there's no plumes probably out there, or maybe there are, but how likely is it that wells in that area are dealing with arsenic issues and have to have filtration systems on them if you don't, by any chance?
We really don't know. All of our wells are in the most northern, we have minus fives, park, the rest are south end of town. So we haven't had anything on north end of town. Don't really have any information on how she was in that area.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's all I have. Any other questions? I have a couple. And I'm not sure staff can answer this, but I'll ask, I'll point in your direction. Who is the legal owner of the downtown charter school site?
I believe it's the charter foundation, but the representative would probably be better than I to officially answer that.
All right, we'll hold that off. And in this location, the Jordana Trail is on an easement that is attached to this parcel or two parcels, correct? In other words, the property is owned by the people who own, whoever owns the parcel owns the land, but they've provided an easement to regional parks.
It was my understanding that the trail is on the old railroad right away, and that there's an easement, that the owners have an easement across it to exit the property at that, across that over there.
Okay.
I believe that the county owns the trail.
Okay.
That's mine.
Councilmember Green, I see you're staging.
I am, but I'm not meaning to interrupt you, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
So more.
Go ahead.
I just want to understand, let's figure we're going to make some comments tonight, and the mayor will put those in a letter and sign them. Can you tell us procedures or where they go and what weight they have? I mean, how are they going to be processed? What is our real?
I'll go back to county staff for their consideration as they're evaluating this project. I would imagine they'd be provided to the decision-makers for this matter. As to the weight, well, it's a comment. It's, you know, typically agencies pay good attention to comments from other government agencies that they carry a fair amount of weight. Not to say that the county will agree necessarily, they may not. We don't always agree with the comments of other agencies, but I think that they are paying attention to it.
So if we say something of significance to the decision-making body, they may seek modifications to the project that would address our concerns.
Yeah, or attach.
Attach.
All right, would the applicant like to make a brief presentation?
Hi, I'm Chris Toffel, the principal of Sebastopol Independent Charter School. This school started about 20 years ago. It has a kindergarten with 20 students. Another school is kindergarten through eighth grade with about 300 students. The school has had a downtown campus for grades three through eight for the last 12 years. The school has a kindergarten through second grade campus in a rented space over by Brookhaven. However, Sebastopol School District notified us that that kindergarten through second grade campus, they want back in a year and a half from now. So we do not have a place for our kindergarten through second grades in a year and a half from now. Actually, for many years, this school has been looking for a new campus to be a unified kindergarten for eighth grade. All the alternatives were far-fetched at best, and now there's a time crunch on top of everything. The school, as you may know, pursued the old Pinecrest campus, which was built as a proper school site with many acres of playground space, but Sebastopol School District selected to rent it out to a charter school from Twin Hills School District. Besides wanting to be a unified campus, why do we want to leave our downtown campus? Again, there's a time crunch to have our kindergarten through second grade. There's inadequate playground space. We have about a half acre for over 200 students to play. It is unhealthy due to an inadequate amount of space for movement for the children and having our physical education program. The using of public parks such as Ives, Libby, and Rabel have been a mixed bag, quite often. There's people smoking various products there. We often find inappropriate items in the park. There's often loud喧嚣 by people in the park and other inappropriate behavior in front of our age five through 14 students. Also, the children have to cross streets every day to be able to access these public parks, so that's not safe. And there's no gardening space. And as far as I know, most public schools in North Bay have a gardening program, and at this time, we're not able to do that. Now Sebastopol Independent Charter School loves Sebastopol. Most of our families live in Sebastopol. Our new campus will provide a unified campus finally, a safer campus with lots of transportation possibilities. It is more suitable for a school. We will have proper space for movement and physical education, and it is still in Sebastopol. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Slater, councilmembers. My name is Bob Roach, 925 First Street. For the past 10 years, my sons have attended Sebastopol Charter School. For the last four years, I've served as president of the Charter Foundation, which is the facilities organization supporting the school. And we are the foundation, is the owner of the downtown campus and the Herblut property on which the school seeks to relocate. I'd like to begin by thanking the city for its support over these past 12 years. As you know, when we first moved downtown, we were given a use permit with a time limit on it, and the city sought it years later to remove that time limit so it could still serve our students into the future. We appreciate the confidence you've shown in us. Downtown has been a very good place for our school to develop and mature into the healthy institution that it is today. But regrettably, downtown has never been large enough to allow us to serve all our students or provide those it does have house with enough room for healthy self-safe outdoor activity. Our students and our families are divided between two campuses over a mile apart. And while we've been fortunate to be within walking distance of public resources like Ives Park and the library, living in downtown has also come with certain disadvantages for our young children who must learn games in a field which is less the size, about the size of residential backyard, and have to navigate busy streets coming and going from their classes. In moving to our new campus and bringing all our grades together under one roof, we are not leaving Sebastopol, even if technically we are, we're going to be outside the city's sphere of influence. We are instead furthering the values of our school and of Sebastopol community, values such as environmental sustainability, healthy outdoor lifestyle, and interaction with the surrounding community. We're going to do this by restoring the native habitat on the new 20-acre site, over half of which we're going to leave as open space or farming purposes. We're going to create new bike trail connections and access points to the Jordana Trail and share our parking lot with trail users. And we're going to provide our students with an outdoor track, fields, and sports courts for their physical as well as their intellectual development. And before the hearing, I passed up some material that will show you how we propose to do these things. It shows the contrast between what we're proposing in our new campus and how we cannot do that in our current campus. As for the matter before you tonight, we reviewed staff's list of possible pedestrian and bicycle improvements, and we note that some of them would enhance the area close to the campus, whereas other ones would enhance the areas over a mile away. We would very much like the opportunity to sit down with staff to discuss which items make the most sense to pursue based on current and anticipated traffic patterns as well as the school's demographics. We have a long history, can I have 15 seconds?
Sure.
Thank you. We have a long history of mutually beneficial cooperation with the city, and we believe that tradition will be furthered by allowing us to meet and discuss these issues with city officials. In closing, I just want to reiterate that we have been and we will continue to be an integral part of Sebastopol even after our move. Our integration and commitment to this wonderful town has been one of the reasons we have succeeded so far, and it derives not from our physical location, but from the very culture of our school community. Thank you very much.
Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item?
Hi, Deborah Taveras. It sounds like this all or nothing school is a wonderful idea. I also would like to add that this might be a wonderful opportunity for the concerns of city services about water. Water again is primary water, and it would be wonderful if the school could teach the children where water really comes from. Providing a well at Sebastopol would never have to be concerned about where water would come from or share their water. We have a primary water expert within three hours of here that has drilled primary water wells all over the world. And why on earth we are still talking about scarcity when we have water and renewable resources within the earth just baffles me. I've passed out this information, and I would hope that we could bridge the conversation somewhat to recognize the water facts, and maybe this is an opportunity for the young children to not be so fearful about the continual scarcity of water and get into a well that you would never, that you would actually, as a city, potentially ask to borrow some of their water. Thank you.
Good evening, Paul Fritz, 437 High Street. There was a time when schools were built in neighborhoods. They were generally within walking and biking distance for the majority of their students. With explosive growth of suburbs and car ownership after World War II, schools started to be located on larger and larger campuses farther and farther away from the populations they served. To this point, Sebastopol's done a great job in bucking this trend. The elementary schools in Sebastopol are all located in residential neighborhoods within walking and biking distance from many of the children attending them. With the approval of this project, the city of Sebastopol will join the ranks of communities with elementary schools that are almost exclusively accessible only by car. This is not progress. The site proposed in this use permit application is in the sprawl model of elementary school development. A large site on the edge of town is essentially only accessible by car. Outside, our voter-approved urban growth boundary. The project proponents may argue that the site is ideal because of its location on the West County Trail. Realistically, however, few children will use this as a means of getting to school. The entire town location is just too far away from where most people live, and I personally would not feel comfortable allowing my child to walk to school on this trail. When my daughter first started walking to school on her own, how would you ever hear from parents and staff at the school who observed her walking, reporting how carefully she crossed the street? I knew the community was looking out for her. Who would be looking out for the students on the West County Trail? No one. Even for the neighborhoods close to this property, they did not have a great way to walk to the site. They had to walk past parking centers with cars moving in and out of driveways, cross Herblut at 116, cross 116 at Herblut, walk down the east side of 116 with a speed limit of 45 miles per hour, and there's nothing but a curve between fast cars and small children. Sebastopol and Still County are on the front line of efforts to combat climate change. We all understand the importance of reducing our consumption of fossil fuels. I'm on the G-PAC. I've received so many comments from people who want a more walkable, likable community, one which will allow us to leave cars behind. Tonight, you passed an ordinance threatening future drive-throughs in town. We're finally making progress on de-emphasizing use of cars. This is exactly what we need to be doing. This proposed school site is exactly what we should not be doing. The school, I'm sure, intends to be on the site for decades, decades of parents forced to drive their children to school. And why? Because it's the original vision of the charter school. That vision is out of date. We know now much more than we did when that vision was created. The vision needs to evolve to the reality of a world facing the catastrophic impacts of climate change. The school does not need this property to succeed. The school is a model of success in the charter school Waldorf movement. Classes are full and most have waiting lists. Parents are not choosing this school because it might someday be located on a 20-acre campus with gardens and orchards. Parents are choosing this school because of the excellent education children receive. They are choosing it for the community of teachers and parents and the values the school teaches. My daughter's been at the school for nine years. She'll graduate in the spring. She has received a top-notch education that I will always be thankful for, and she has done involved heading this school in its current configuration. This is an important land use decision that should not be overstand. I urge you to ask the county to deny the use permit application before you. The proposed school location is what sprawl looks like. It does not look sustainable Sebastopol looks like. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Sit down. Other comments closed. Anybody have any comments on this?
Well, I'll start with two comments. First, to acknowledge that the charter school has done a really successful job integrating with the downtown community. I can remember back to those very hostile hearings about the use permit, and are we glad that's so far behind us? And I'm not meaning to make us remember it, only meaning to say how well the school has fit downtown and how much I think that downtown has enjoyed having the area populated. I know my house is on the walking route between Pinecrest and Parkside and the charter school, so we're seeing kids with little backpacks in violent cases often. So let me compliment on that. I'm interested to note, too, and this is very curious, that a number of the complaints or problems with the site now were very well-known and obvious when the school moved there, like the small space, the need to cross streets, the lack of real genuine playground, the fact that there wasn't any room for a garden. So the school community opted for that lifestyle or school lifestyle, and again, it's been very, very successful. So it's hard for me to see how success can necessarily flip all of a sudden to being unacceptable. My biggest concern for our community is to have such a significant draw in the north end of town where we'll have people traveling from our greater Sebastopol community, from the south, from the west, from the east, particularly, all heading to that northerly spot. I think that's the biggest concern, and I just don't know how with all the traffic problems we have now, that we're going to deal with all that new pattern of travel in the morning open hours and the closing hours of the afternoon. And I think our staff has done a good job pointing out significant infrastructure impacts and need for improvements that we'll talk about. So I'm going to start with those two comments to get the discussion going today.
Well, I too would like to compliment you on your excellent school. I know so many people who have attended there, children who have graduated from their faculty, former principal, and go on and on. And you're a very important part of our community. Not only that, I think that your existence and the opportunity for the Waldorf education is part of what draws people to our community. It's actually, I hate to bring it up, but in nature, economic generator in our community in addition to providing education. I too am rather concerned about the changing pattern of having something located on the very edge of town as opposed to the center of town. And I'm wondering a couple of things. First of all, if you have considered having a... Um, first of all, um, if you have considered having a, if there's a possibility of having an in-town school bus or a small van that would, um, pick up, um, kids from around town, if that might be a viable thing to do to, um, to mitigate, um, all of these car threats. And yet my, one of my other curiosities is I, I thought it was such a big missed opportunity, which, um, I can't quite, I never have been able to understand how that missed opportunity occurred with the Pinecrest site. And I know it's a big missed opportunity, but, um, just wondering, um, what the status of that is now. I, I do understand that Sunrise is there, but I don't know for how long. I, for ten years? So their site is, um, their site is vacated for ten years? Okay. That's interesting. Um, and then I gather Reach is, um, is well and, and sponsored there, so. Um, I guess we don't have any other site opportunities that are with our existing sites. Okay. Um, well, I think that, that kind of, that's my questions for now.
Councilmember here?
Well, this is a difficult one, you know? Who doesn't like a school? This is like, are you four against Girl Scout cookies? And so, you know, we like them, but they have bad ingredients. But anyway, I'm serious about. It, it's, it's complex because it's a school. It's not like you're going to build a factory there, you know? And, and yeah, I have some concerns along all these same lines. I understand your need to have adequate space, and I think it's, the council really needs to recognize that if we're saying to the operators and the owners of the charter school, "We would prefer you to be downtown because there's not any huge pieces of land downtown and you need room for the kids to run around", you're talking building a high-rise building, you're talking building possibly a three- or four-story building, possibly, to accommodate all your campus needs, and still leave enough room left over for a basketball court and running field, if that space were available. I'm not saying this. I think one thing I would need to feel comfortable about supporting this is that there's absolutely no options elsewhere in the, in the downtown walkable, likable, pedestrian-friendly core of our, our town. You know, I, I have to concur with some of the comments that have been made. I think it's unrealistic to think of this as a, I think this is going to be a predominantly drive-your-kids-to-school campus. It just seems that way. I think it's unrealistic to expect kids to use the existing infrastructure. The bike trail, frankly, I don't feel comfortable on, walking as an adult sometimes by myself. I know it seems to be noted for its, uh, a place for, you know, high school students to hang out and smoke pot and do whatever high school students do. So I'm not sure the wisdom of sending fourth, fifth, sixth graders through that area unaccompanied. You know, and I think also what I'm seeing here is I, I see that your, your school is designed to be phased in, based on funding availability, and that makes sense, it's a big project. But I think that in the staff report and in some of the other documents I've seen, and even comments from council members, I think that there's an expectation that the school will participate to some extent in what could be some very expensive off-site infrastructure improvements and mitigation. I'm not sure if the school has engaged in conversations with people about what those expectations might be, because it might be, um, an amount of money that's pretty significant. Just to put in one, like it's been suggested, well, maybe there should be a street park Sebastopol Crosswalk across 116. Those are, how much are those? Hundred and fifty thousand dollars or something? I mean, that's one crosswalk. You know? I, we've been quoting, you know, a hundred yards of sidewalk is like thirty thousand dollars. So, I, I'm just saying that with this site might come some mind-blowing expectations of cost of providing infrastructure that basically already exists in downtown. And, and I don't want that to get lost in the conversation. And just to be fair to you, um, you know, I thought, I found it interesting that in the distribution list in the county's permit application, it said local fire district, and it listed great fire department, but I think realistically, who's going to be the first on the scene when somebody gets hurt? It's going to be Sebastopol Fire because they're better staffed and they're closer. And so, on the one hand, we're trying to pretend like this isn't really in the city, you know? Because frankly, let's face it, we don't have any jurisdiction here. It's just like Palm Drive Hospital. We don't have any official jurisdiction over that site. So on the one hand, you get to drive on our streets, you get to maybe use our water if your well has a problem. Maybe the, our fire department shows up. Thank you. And our fire department shows up, but you're not really in the city, so we don't really have a say. You know, it's kind of an odd circumstance for us to be in. I, I really think it's a car-centric project, project. I think it's, the sad part is, is I think it's teaching every generation of kids that attends that school, if it's built at that location, that it's okay to drive your kids to school. And we're working so hard to break that mindset in Sebastopol through no drive-throughs, through so many other free charging stations for electric cars. And then to turn around and say, "Well, project where everybody has to drive to it is okay." But if we don't have a better solution for you, we're basically saying, "Go figure something out, and we don't know what it is, then you'd lose it." So, you know, it's kind of a catch-22 for us, or for me personally. So, I think that's all I have for now.
When the downtown site was first proposed, I, I wasn't a big fan of it. I didn't think it was a good place for a school. That was all those years ago. And in all those years, my mind has changed significantly. It's changed about that site in specific, and it's been changed significantly about where schools should be located in general. The idea that all children need to have acres to run and frolic is a, it's a nice idea, but frankly, there are probably hundreds of thousands of children living in urban environments in big cities, millions across the world, hundreds of thousands probably in our own country, who go to school in an urban environment. They don't have twenty acres to run and frolic, and yet they seem to turn out just fine. So, I'm, I'll just say it right out, I'm not a fan of this site. I think that this is the epitome of sprawl. When the O'Reilly campus was proposed and constructed, the community, there was a large contingent of the community who did not want to see that constructed. This is the next domino to fall. And I, we have one multi-use trail in and around our community. We're talking about bisecting it with a, with a road for cars, the one bike and pedestrian path that we have. And I, I think that there's any number of problems with, with the sighting of this location. Our, our downtown, as it currently consists, is multi-use. We have residential use, we have business, uh, commercial, uh, retail, we have commercial professional offices, and we have a school. And I, I think that that's a really good mix. So, no, it's not in our city limit. It's peripherally, uh, to us. But I, I just think there's so many problems. And, and the county application process is that this is, this is rural, this is a zoning district. It's, it's rural residential. And in the zoning code for rural residential, um, uses permitted with a use permit, which means you have to ask special permission to do these uses. And there's a long list of them, and one of them is public schools, subject at minimum to the criteria of general, of the county general plan policy, LU six E, and that's their land use element. And land use element six E, public and private schools, hospitals, places of religious worship, and similar places of public or community assembly in rural land use category shall meet all of the following criteria. And there's a list of nine. And number seven, sites are limited to fifty percent of the parcel or ten acres, whichever is less, with the exception of existing legally established uses. This would be a new use, so it's not a legally existing established use. So, the requirement is fifty percent or ten acres, and this happens to be a twenty-acre parcel, plus or minus. So, the, to, to have it brought forward as being, um, uh, that they're doing good by the community by providing ten acres, I'm not saying that, that that's not a good thing, but what I'm saying is that they're actually required. Any, any use would be required to follow that. So, it's about semantics in that case. And for me, actually, the, the biggest problem with this is I have number eight. And I'll just read it verbatim. "The site has frontage on a design collector or arterial roadway." This site does not have either of those. Um, it is, the access is proposed to be through of the, a stub of a road that is at the north end of the O'Reilly campus access. And in, nowhere does it actually touch a collector or arterial roadway. Uh, I mean, I've got a, a list of reasons why I don't think it's a good site for a school, but I'll stop there. All right, I'll say a couple more. The, the urban growth boundary was established for good reason, and the, and I'm not actually sure, maybe staff can weigh in on this. Who, who is exempt from an urban growth boundary? Our, I understand that schools are exempt, but the school is not making this application. A foundation is making the application.
Well, there, there is not a request for the city to change its urban growth boundary. But yes, there are certain uses, uh, I believe, schools and parks, possibly some types of infrastructure facilities can occur outside of the new G P, uh, under the city's rules.
Okay. Thank you. And the, the phrase "a small school on a large site" is repeated throughout the application at the county, for the county. And I just simply interpret that as a large school on a large site with small buildings. And the access for the public is virtually nonexistent, so it's, it's essentially private property. There's no benefit to our community other than by asking special permission to use it. The, and I understand the calculation. I go through them professionally quite often for parking. However, a school with a proposed three-hundred-and-sixty-student load and forty staff is proposed to have almost a hundred-and-thirty parking spaces. And I'm wondering how many second graders are driving themselves a parking all day. It just seems like an awful lot of parking for an elementary, essentially an elementary school. We have, you, you look at the campuses in town and how many parking spaces they provide, and it, it's exponentially less, fewer spaces. So to me, that is yet another reason why this is envisioned from the start as a driving, drive-to facility. So, that's, those are my thoughts. Anybody else? Councilmember here?
It's really hard to separate our support for your school from the problems with this site. I, I don't, I can only speak for myself, but we don't want to give the impression, I don't want to give the impression, I should say, that there's, we have issues with the school, because we don't. It's with this site. And, and I feel like by saying no to the site, we're not saying, "And here's a better solution", because we're not saying that. We're basically leaving you hanging if we say that. And, and it feels a bit unfair to you, but, you know, on the other hand, we have the interest of many people to represent, bigger than the school community. You know, it's, it's minor, but it, you know, as an exact, I think it's just more cleaves to the car-centric nature of this that there's only twenty-eight bicycle bases. That's like seven percent of the staff and student body is envisioned needing a place to park a bike. You know, the parking is all along the only public frontage of the school, the trail. So if you walk by or ride by, what you're seeing of the school is the parking area at quarters of the site plan I saw. And yet there's a big area at the northeast corner, for instance, and I don't know that it'll possibly be there. Maybe a parking lot doesn't make sense, but it's a huge hill. But, you know what I'm saying, it's just interesting that the, the one place that you see is parking. And, and I think it needs to be acknowledged that this isn't a public amenity project. It's, and we, and, you know, it's understandable. It's a school. And so, um, you know, for instance, here it talks about a re-vegetated site provides a new community resource, but most of the school is not publicly accessible, and, and with good reason. But I think it's misleading for us to think that we're getting like this new twenty-acre parking tent. We're not. I would just hope that there's a solution, an alternate site that's more centrally located in town. And maybe I'm dreaming, uh, that it could be more inten-, you know, that it could be intensively developed. I don't know what the costs involved are with acquiring this property and building the infrastructure versus building at another location, um, as far as land acquisition costs and, and infrastructure building, the buildings on site. And, and like I say, I think there's going to be a reasonable expectation that there's a participation to some level by the school community to pay for off-site, um, improvements. And I think those costs may turn out to be staggering to the school community. I don't know if that's been discussed, and the magnitude of those costs, because it gets very expensive really quickly. I think those are all things that need to be considered, and it may make building in a more central location if those account, if those price costs are taken into account, look to be more financially feasible. You know, it might be more money, you know, just upfront. So, I would hope that an alternate site could be found that would, would relieve the need for transportation by car as what appeared to be so obvious in this location. And, um, just for the purpose of the record, I received some written comments from, um, Mr. Paul Fritz, and also some written comments from Sebastopol tomorrow, which I would like to incorporate into the record as reflective of my comments on this matter. Okay, can I? That's it. Thanks.
Councilmember Agarwal?
Well, thank you for mentioning that, because I believe those comments were directed to all of us, and I hope Mary got an electronic copy. Uh, those authors are here in the audience tonight, and, uh, I want to express my appreciation for the thoughtful analysis of the project. I, I would say it this way, if you were coming and proposing that that be a public park up there, I would say, "Well, who? I'll live with the traffic." My bead leader would be so happy to have a, a park they could drive to. It would be a wonderful amenity. We would live with that traffic. We'd be happy. The same way we have a new Laguna Park out to the east. Uh, I think there would be really no objection. The concern is that, um, I think it's pretty clearly a location that means everybody's going to drive there. Almost the opposite of the culture of the community now, where so many people are able to walk. And, um, those students and their parents create great liveliness and pedestrian presence for downtown. Uh, I'm just really concerned that- I'm just really concerned that we all don't understand the impact on our traffic. And I think Councilmember Eider is right. We would certainly want to know what this proposal would do to our roadways that are already very problematic. Our G-PAC, people have heard that. What can I say? Out on the campaign trail this fall, that's the number one thing I've heard in every one of the two years before that. Traffic is really a big problem. Inadequate infrastructure is another big problem. Sidewalks that aren't complete, like the ones that our planning director mentioned, the curve around, past Live Oak on Hillsburg Avenue. And I don't see how students from our neighborhoods are going to get there. And I really don't believe they're going to ride the bike trail because there's no eyes on that trail. And parents are so cautious about where their kids go, particularly on their own or a group of kids, that it doesn't seem to be practical to think anybody's going to walk there and anybody's going to ride their bike there. Particularly when you look at the maps that Paul provided that show there aren't neighborhoods in a reasonable half-mile radius, which is the reasonable distance people will walk. I mean, you get a little bit of the Soul Corn and the north end of town, the apartments on North Rav. You get a little bit of Belmont Terrace, maybe a little bit of Norvay. And I'm not sure that the residents in those parts of our community are members of the school community, or a big proportion of the members. So I think the location has another disadvantage, which is if it's up there, then the sense will be, the physical sense of our community will be, that our boundary just moved way out there. And pretty soon, it's going to go, for instance, if the Von Figley Apple Orchard gets developed, and then, you know, north of that, and then pretty soon, we're all the way out to Amse. This is the effect of sprawl. And that's not what we wanted with an urban growth boundary. We wanted a clear demarcation. And the delight in that very property is that it is, what do you say, pastoral? I mean, it is a country property. There aren't a lot of buildings on it. It provides a lot of open space as our boundary. So if we want to go forward tonight, I think we want to make a decision whether we...